Tamika and I have been keeping an eye on that. There's one set of minutes. Was it January 14th we have to wait on?
Oh, maybe that's the one. Okay.
Do you have a motion?
Uh, give a motion to accept the meeting minutes of January 6th.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Forgot Britton was there. He scared, he surprised me.
I'm gonna leave it on mute unless, um, unless it gets turned on something, so.
I think he wasn't at that.
No, he wasn't at that meet. You weren't at that meeting, um, Britton, on the, on the 6th.
Oh, that was for the 6th. I thought it was for the meeting for special town.
It wasn't regular yet.
February 11th was a regular meeting.
Yeah.
And we have next minutes of the February 11th meeting.
I believe Britton was there at that one, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, Britton, you were at the one on the 11th.
I didn't have any corrections.
Once again, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve February 11th's meeting minutes. Second?
So I'm see, I'm still seeing people reading.
We, when we get, we can ask questions on these when we get to the end of the meeting, correct?
What's that, on the minutes?
Yeah.
You can ask them now.
Oh, I just want, my question is, did you get updated sets for Bryce Estates from Clee?
I've not gotten those yet.
That's all I need to know. Thanks.
No. Alex? Anything further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, uh, next up.
Good time.
Next up. Okay, we have a discussion for recommendation, recommendation to appoint Alex Mouse. How do you pronounce it?
I was told Moss when I was a kid, but it doesn't really matter.
Excellent. Sounds better than Mouse.
I apologize for being late.
No, perfect time.
You know, Brenton is almost unpassable right now.
No kidding?
Yeah.
Tell me about it.
Especially from the development towards Campbell with all the heavy trucks that are going down there. Road's destroyed, but we got a little, little stuck on the way, so we made it.
We'll drive those wonders. At least they're adhering to coming up Glenwood because that was one thing Joe was adamant about. They can't bring heavy trucks in from both sides. So. Well, just, yeah, they could come in.
Why wouldn't you come through the development? Stop. Stop. Down a paved road. Load limits and whatnot. I mean, it's a historic dirt road. It would seem that.
I don't know that.
Forty tons is a little much.
I don't know what that bridge is rated for.
That would be a planning issue.
No, it's a, yeah.
Engineering issue.
Engineering issue, yeah. We don't have anything to do with the building of bridges.
I have a little discussion for later, the unanticipated thing about Britton.
Okay. Excellent.
So, anyway.
Ming, stop. Stop. What's their deal, buddy?
It's gonna be our guard dog if you're, if you're.
I've actually almost never heard him bark before, not in public. My other dog will start barking.
So Alex, you're, you're all on board?
Yes.
Excellent. Alright, cool. That's all I wanted, wanted to make sure, cause I know you came to last meeting, gotta. What's the word I'm looking for? A, a choice of how we do stuff?
Yep.
Definitely a huge help with another person on here, especially now like when somebody's on vacation and we need a, we need a fort.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Like if Britton wasn't here, if I wasn't here, or Keith or Norm, you'd be able to step in and vote on the special permits. So good.
Yeah, ju- just, I, I don't know, just a kind of a little clarification that, uh, you know, as needed, uh, you can vote particularly on special permit, uh, applications. However, I, I believe in order to vote, he would still have to be here for the entire hearing.
Correct. There is the Mullen rule where he can miss one, say, say the public hearing is multiple meetings. He can miss one maximum and catch up by watching the video. So you're allowed to miss one meeting of a public hearing as long as you catch up and watch the video and become educated on what was discussed. That's fine.
Assuming he's appointed, uh, we're gonna include him in the email of our agendas?
Yes, of course. Oh, yeah. Yeah, he'll get packaged just like everybody else, yeah.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah, so naturally after tonight, uh, the, he wouldn't be official until we had a joint meeting with the select board to appoint him as the associate member. This is more of an introductory, uh, moment for.
I don't wanna make a motion. I'll just make a suggestion that we set that up as soon as possible with the select board.
I think we're working on it. We've.
We're proposing March 3rd if you guys are available. I have it tentatively on the agenda for this coming Monday. The other option is, uh, Monday, March 17th is the other meeting this month.
Third, third, third. I don't think I got any issues with third.
I don't think I have.
Is that next Monday?
Yep, that is coming Monday.
I'm good. I can make it. I should be.
So I'll make sure I post an agenda for the planning board. Um, I'll do that tomorrow.
Yeah.
Since it's gonna be on Monday, tomorrow's gonna be the last day.
Yeah.
No, Thursday.
I'm sorry, tomorrow's Wednesday. You're right.
So you saw a little time.
Okay, so, I don't, I don't, I don't really think it's pretty much sure. I'm just gonna say welcome aboard.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing.
Thank you guys.
He's, he's running unopposed.
Yeah. Yeah, you're running unopposed, so there's, uh, you have no competition in this.
Excellent. I like it.
Okay, uh, I guess we're on to. Item three and approval not required on, on the rest of the world.
I, I apologize to the board and any members of the public who tried to view the packet. It's brought to my attention that there was a glitch with the packets where this A and R did not appear in the package, just the other A and R. So, um, if the person in the studio could please pull up the 89 Palmagussit plan that's on the thumb drive, that would be great for the public and the board to see.
John, can we pause for just a minute? I got a message that there are some folks that have not been able to sign in on Zoom. It's an odd message. I don't know why, since some people are on, but can we just check with the cable folks?
Recede for two minutes? Yeah.
Okay.
It did, it did make me update. I think, I think Zoom sent out a whole bunch of new updates that you have to download.
Oh, that's. That's why Norm, the, in our packet, the Form A for this has Weaver Farm in here. It doesn't have Palmagussit. Yeah. Yeah, cause I went and looked and it's that, it's that property where the state just did the build. They built up the, uh, what's the word I'm looking?
The wall?
The wall, yeah.
That's what that, yeah.
Yeah, that's what this one is on 89, yeah. Since we're in a pause, do we have any, uh, you, uh, any Rutland registered voters here? One, two, three. Can I borrow you for, uh, I'm running for planning board and I'm looking for signatures? Okay.
So it's nothing with us?
Okay.
It's a Zoom thing, so people are just gonna have to bear with it and do the updates. And I apologize for some reasons, A and R didn't end up on my thumb drive either, so we're gonna have to go with the copies we have here.
I got an extra copy you wanna load?
No, I got some right here. Thanks. Yeah, so it's not them. There we go. Thanks, Julian.
I'll let everybody else ask their thing. Oh, I did the, I did the.
Oh, you figured it out.
Yeah, cause I, I remember seeing him putting the, bringing the, the rocks in, but let Julian do the presentation.
There's a piece of property off the Palmagussit Road. Existing houses here. This lot conforms completely to frontage area for a building lot. This is a parcel of land. This is the field, the old, this is, this was, um, used to be John Holmes' property. It's a field and the family wants to separate this piece of property because there is other potential uses possibly, in the future, so it's not a buildable lot, and it says it right there on it. But there was other things that could possibly be done in the future and they want this house taken off of the, the property.
Julian, my question, when I looked at this, since the only access to this house is being, basically if we approve this A and R, would be on a, a separate piece of property and other part?
Well, there's actually, there's actually a gravel, gravel right around the end of that wall. It's not ideal. This is, this is, they paved this beautifully, but this is another access. This used to be a half moon, half round driveway, but there is, we are providing an easement.
Oh, you are?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that 25 foot wide.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Yep, that's right there for it.
Alright, good. I just wanna.
It is.
You can't build a driveway off that existing driveway? Is that why it's not buildable or it's?
No, it's not enough frontage. You need 100 feet and it's only 86.77. So, and then there's this, this possibly in the future, this parcel, this is, has way more frontage than they need. So there's a possibility of getting some frontage to make it.
So it's not, it's not a buildable lot as it is right now on this plan?
It's just a parcel of land.
So.
I'm assuming this.
Yep, now it goes with it to make the.
What was to make it an acre?
Yep. Yep.
Okay, you go with creating, a creative, uh.
Creative.
Design.
So, Norm, this is where I need my refresh. This is just a division of properties.
Not creating house lots.
Yeah, exactly. So it's not, it's, it's an A and R because there's no frontage and acreage with this.
Anytime you make a property line change, it's an A and R.
Okay.
Anytime.
Julian, that's what I was struggling. I was just like.
It's, uh, whether it's for lots or for a driveway or.
That's a generic term.
Oak tree.
Good. I just. The easements there are norm, so I'm fine with that. It's one thing I wanted to make sure, cause that's the only driveway that I.
Yeah.
I can recognize if there, I don't even, I didn't even see that gravel because it's such a steep. Okay.
There's a hydrant right there.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Okay, anybody any problems with this?
I don't know.
No, this is the one that we had to, um, it couldn't come forward at the last meeting because town, I checked with town council and they did s- say it was important, uh, even though it was okay, they, they wanted Julian to add the notation that it's not a buildable lot. That was the only change from the previous draft.
Good.
Do I have a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion to sign the A and R.
Uh, second.
At 89 Palmagussit.
Second day.
I think we gotta do the verbal votes because Britton's remote. Is that, am I wrong?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For this.
Hey, um, I do have a real quick question. Sorry to kinda bounce in here. I'm just, I, I had to scroll over to Google Maps because I wanted to verify something. On, on that lot, Julian, is that, is that Weaver Farm Road?
No, 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 Britton.
Different, different project.
Britton, that's a different project that's coming up next. I, the, for some reason, this A and R didn't end up in the packet. I apologize.
I was confused by what you guys were pointing to and discussing, and I'm like, I don't see any of that.
Yeah, no, that was, that was my mistake.
That is Weaver Farm Road.
Disregard all.
No, no, Britton, this is the property that's catacornered to the brand new dam that was put up. Um, it's, there's a brick, it's almost like a blockhouse that's there.
Okay, yeah, I, I know, I know that, I know where that's at.
Yep, and the state built a nice retaining wall inside of it.
Sure did.
Big money, no whammies.
Okay, uh, anything further?
Public, anything?
No, it's not public.
Oh, that's right, it's right. Sorry.
So all in favor? Tim?
Aye.
Keith? Aye.
Britton?
Aye.
Norm, aye.
Sign it up.
John, if you need, if you need my signature, I can stop by tomorrow morning if you're in the office.
No, that's okay, Britton. As long as we have a majority of the board signing it.
Okay, you're all good. Okay, very good.
And hold on to those pens because we have another A and R next.
Alright. There we go.
We're gonna have to, this is, what's, oh, that's another copy of this?
Yeah, that's just to wrap it, so that.
Oh, okay, cool.
They get real antsy about the my lives at the registry. You get a drop of water on them, they could say, we're not gonna accept this. It's crazy. It really is.
Julian, Julian? There you go.
Okay. Next, we have another A and R.
Weaver Farm Road. This one is, could, so in the studio, this one is on the thumb drive. Could you pull, pull up the one for Weaver Farm Road? Please, so we can see it? Keith?
Sorry.
No, this is a signed one. That we just gave back to you.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Ah, sorry. Hold on, let's wait for the thing to pull up. Okay, great.
Okay, so this one's on Campbell Street and Weaver Farm Road, and this was already.
A and R.
A and R'd, but after we did soil tests and house locations and all that, we had to modify the lines a little bit. So you can see in life lines, that was this lot before. This used to be this lot here, and this house used to go like that. And in this lot, the line used to go here. This stayed the same. They just wanted a little bit more land on this one, and that's it. So we didn't create any more new lots, but we just reshaped the lot, so we have to do a A and I, A and R. And Weaver Farm Road is a public road, believe it or not.
Yep, I know all about that. Plowed and handled by this town.
Yeah, this is a straightforward one as well.
Yeah, I think so.
So lot three uses Weaver Farm as its, uh, frontage for 200 feet plus the 40 feet, so it's actually 240 if I'm not mistaken.
Well, you can't count, you can't count that as frontage, believe it or not. End of a road is not considered frontage. Don't ask me why.
Okay. Julian, you got me on that one. I would've.
You got me on that one too. I don't know why, but it's.
Already not considered. It's just, uh.
Well, it's Massachusetts.
One of those things.
Hey, uh, gentlemen, I have a quick question on this.
Yep.
So it does state Weaver Farm Road is a public way there, and I know you guys just talked about that. It, so I'm just looking at Google Maps because I'm trying to understand. I did this a little earlier in the week and dropped the ball and I should've sent an email. Is that Weaver Farm Road? Cause the maps show Weaver, actual Weaver Farm Road labeled further south where it, it has basically an intersection with Nate's Way. So is this Weaver Farm Road?
Google's.
GIS, which I always say.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that's, that actually, yeah.
Britton, that, if I'm not mistaken, is the access to the tower.
The tower.
And that is not Weaver Farm Road that I know of. I know this one, just from experience, is a town road.
You see?
Yeah. Yeah, that one right there.
And any GIS at Google Maps has a margin of error, so you can't really, you can't go by that.
No.
Yeah, that's why I'm just asking the question.
No, it, the, the Weaver Farm Road that's listed in this, in this, um, document, Britton, is the same one that's listed with the town and has been for 40, 50 years?
Good to go. Alright.
Okay.
Let me just, uh.
Yeah, the frontage all the way.
I guess I'll ask. John? Is there anything in mass that has dual frontage on two different roads as an issue?
No. It's, it's a corner lot. You just add up the frontage. It's, it's add together.
Alright, that's that contiguous thing.
Yeah.
Continuous versus contiguous. Okay.
The only thing it does is it creates, instead of have, you don't technically have, you have two front lot lines and two rear lot lines. You don't have any side lot line lines when it's a corner lot like that.
Okay, okay, good. 200, 200, um, 200 setback, 255. Okay, I'm good. And they've all got more than a acre and a half, so.
Yeah.
If Weaver Road was private, does it count as frontage?
Yeah.
Okay.
It could be an ancient way. It could be a paper road. It's very, A and R's are very, the law's very flexible in that.
Just curious.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not that I agree with it 100%, but that's what it is.
This is plowed and maintained by the town.
So do I have a motion?
I'll let somebody else. I do the last one.
Um, yep, uh, motion to approve the A and R lot line changes for.
It would be Six Weaver Road.
Six Weaver Road in Rutland.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Anything further? Hearing none again. All in favor of Tim?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Brad of Britton?
Aye.
Norm, aye.
Okay, you can take that plan down. Thank you.
I'll send this, that's why, cause I don't need it anymore.
Actually, Tim, you're gonna need to sign.
I did.
Oh, you did?
At the top. Oh, I haven't signed this one yet.
Okay, we're on a lot. Yep, so here.
And of course I'll ask the question, cause since Dick's not here, we got all the checks and everything for both of these A and Rs?
Wait a sec, I'm gonna listen to signatures.
Yep.
Okay.
The gatekeeper make sure.
Yes, that's right.
I just had to ask, cause it was a, uh, it was a Williams special.
That's the most important part of the apple.
Yeah, that's why I was giving my pen back. I think we're done with the signatures.
The signatures?
Julian?
Nope.
Okay.
And. Alright, so that's done.
Okay, next we have decision. Uh, on a common driveway on 377 East County Road.
Yes. This was, uh, the public hearing was closed last time by the board, so this is the decision. Very standard, very simple decision for a common driveway. List of application materials and the project summary and procedural history. Couple of things I do wanna point out in the conditions is the, there are a couple of things that the board has not been provided yet that are supposed to be provided for a common driveway. So condition number two is prior to the issuance of any building permits for the homes on the subject property, the applicant shall provide the planning board with a copy of the driveway and utility easement plan along with the recording information from the, the registry of deeds. And number three, prior to the issuance of any building permits for the homes on the subject property, the applicant shall provide the planning board with a copy of the common driveway homeowners agreement along with the recording information for the registry of deeds. And this is, these are within our zoning bylaws as far as requirements for common driveways. And the other condition, the other three conditions are standard.
Who, I guess, John, I'm gonna ask the question through Norm. Who tracks that?
I would have to track it.
Okay.
Because before I sign off on the building permit, because it goes through the online permitting. I would have to, I would have to get that before.
I just wanna make sure we got some way to make sure we get them.
So it goes through different departments and if, if one department doesn't sign off on it, it doesn't proceed to the other department, so.
It seems, cause it seems to me in the past that we've at least wanted to see the.
HOA. See, that's the problem I've got with proceeding forward with this, is I don't have an HOA in front of me.
So it's up to the board. If you wanna hold off on signing, you can. It's up to you.
To follow procedure we've done in the past, Norm, we haven't signed off on anything until we had at least an HOA in front of us.
I know.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna. That's what I'm looking for. I don't wanna set precedent by saying yes to this one and then we said no to the other ones.
You might just wanna step in just to keep the ball rolling, cause they can't get a building permit to make that a common driveway unless they get that in place for the building permit. Anyway, so there's.
But how's it happened before?
We typically have got the HOA and then we've sent it to council, our, through us, just to make sure everything's good, cause we're not attorneys. It's come back to us with any comments or everything's A O K, and we've signed off.
Hmm, I don't know if that's happened on every one of them.
Become kind of a standard, standard one. I don't, I don't know if we've sent all of them off for legal review.
Okay.
Like I say.
I mean, with this common driveway.
It's pretty much a standard one.
In this case, that driveway is already there and that's already been a common driveway. This is more of a formality on this particular one, cause there were more than, more, two buildings on that drive, on that property prior, on that one. So anything I'm, protect the homeowners is what I'm like, cause I've already been through a common driveway myself and I did not.
But it, it also isn't within our regulations that those things are required.
Yeah.
This is the common driveway with duplexes.
With duplexes.
Yeah, so I mean, it'd be four.
So it'd be four housing units.
Four in HOA, I guess, I mean.
Julian, could you have something together for us by the next meeting?
I could talk to, talk to the guy. I mean, I'll just.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I apologize. It's just one step for, now this step gets him to a different place to go to the next step.
Yeah.
So it's almost a catch 22, but. I don't know when to pass it. We've, we've made sure we have that in place before he goes to the next step.
But do we trust the permitting system?
Well, I basically see everything. I sign off on everything when it comes through, so.
Doesn't go past. Cause he's gotta get the wells. He's got a lot of things that have to be done before anything happen there anyway, so well's gonna get drilled. So, and financing, the banks only wanna see approvals before they'll let you go to the next step. So now, I don't wanna get him in a bind with that part if.
I wouldn't wanna make up like a crazy scenario too, too far down the road, but say the homeowner's insurance has some crazy language in it and we signed it today. Would, would it essentially lock in that no one can adjust that document or?
I don't believe this approval is.
Binding to that.
Yeah, no, it's not binding. This just allows them to have a common driveway.
That we made the dimensional requirements set forth. If it's wide enough. Who maintains it? The town's never gonna be liable for it.
You're just saying a copy has to come through the board, then that means.
And it's up to the board if, if you're, if you're okay with it being before building, building permits are issued, or if you want to make sure it's in place before that's, that's your, that's your call.
I, I just like all the paperwork. I mean, this is getting back to when I'm a pain in the butt about the drawings. We've got, we've gotten tagged and bagged already on drawings with, uh, crossings. I just don't, I'm sorry to be a pain, but I'm.
What this is, is we had to assure that the dimensional requirements, which we voted on last year, did happen. Now, the, the homeowners association is probably gonna be one with other things in it, not just this. So that one's gonna be null and void anyways, cause it's, these are, on this particular case, there are two duplexes. So if he decides to rent it to two different people or four different people, it's gonna be a whole bunch of things in that.
Yeah.
I have a duplex on Kenwood and I have, I have that. I have a duplex on Kenwood, and I have, I have that. And then, it's not a common driveway, but it's a separate issue than making sure that that driveway is built the way your requirements ask, and that's what we proved out.
And I'm not worried about the building, I'm, I'm worried about maintenance, yeah, because, again, to apologize.
The homeowners association, which I'm saying that there's gonna be one, because of the buildings, and this one will get, what they give you is not gonna be the final homeowners insurance, uh, agreement, because other things are gonna be added into it, landscaping, uh, the building, the roofs, the windows. So.
I mean.
And now we'll get ironed out when he goes to get the building permit, because he's gonna have an actual plan of what's involved, so.
I, I guess, well, just a couple of things. You know, when we were all, when we were looking at those things, uh, you know, the homeowners agreements and that, was pretty much e- either back before we had the permitting process, or maybe even before we had a planner. So, you know, things have, things have changed, I'm not advocating that we necessarily sign this, but just noting that, you know, things are a little bit different now. Uh, Britton, any comments?
Um, yeah, just real quick, um, I have in other municipalities, it is common to, um, get the HOA together after, um, subdivision approval. Um, it's not uncommon, but, um, there, there, there is always a, a mountain to climb if you push it off until the end, when you're trying to get your permits. In some conditions, some municipalities will even do certificate of occupancy before that, um, before they, the, so the department can issue that. That would have to be, uh.
So that'd be another thing, if you wanted to give him a little bit more time to make the changes, the final changes to the HOA, you could do it before he gets a C O, and I could make the building official away with that.
Yeah, Britton just, just gave me a little bit of confidence, like if, I don't want to be the only one in Massachusetts that says we gotta hold off. There's other communities that do this.
So you're okay with me changing that to?
And I'm not, Tim, I'm not saying that the, the entire state does business in that.
No, 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 I'm just saying that we can be a little flexible.
So you're okay with it being prior to C Os?
Yeah.
Okay.
On the HOA.
Yeah, I, I would not.
Hold on, on, on both, or just the HOA?
I was, I was under the assumption we were just talking about the HOA requirement.
Okay, so the other one can be building permits for the easement and utility plan, then?
That, that should be, yeah, we should have that before the work is started, because it's an easement, it's legal language, it does have a bearing on the project.
Okay. Fair, fair enough.
So, are, are we waiting on two, and then we're giving a bye on the four?
The first one, easement is on the Form A that you already signed. The easement for that driveway is depicted on that plan, so you already have that. I would never do a common driver without an easement.
Well, hold on, can you, can you unroll it and show?
No, I don't have that one. This is Route sixty-eight.
That's right.
Okay, so hold on.
So that is on, that easement is on.
When did we do that, guys?
I, I got the file right here.
The last meeting.
Okay, because I've got all these brought with me.
That's where it ends at the five hundred foot line, where you can't go longer than that.
Remember that part of the discussion?
Easement, on the Form A, that split these two, the actual recorded plan, right there, is easement line.
Okay.
Right there, and that's on the Form A, so it goes like this, like this, like this, all the way back.
So two's covered then.
Alright, so you're good with that?
It's in there.
Okay.
Then I'm, I'm fine with, uh.
So I can take that out of there?
Yup. Through Norm, I'm fine with signing this, it's just somewhere we gotta make a note that before the occupa, certificate of occupation.
Yeah, no, I'll change that condition.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to sign the site plan review decision with the modification to, of, before C Os issued, a HOA has to be finalized. Uh, for a two lot common driveway on three seventy-seven East County Road, parcel ID oh five three dash B dash eleven point oh one and eleven point oh four.
I will second said motion.
Is there any discussion? Anything further? Hearing none, uh, once again, the roll call, Tim?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Britton?
Aye.
Norm, aye.
So, I will file this with the town clerk tomorrow.
Okay.
And then I will get the notices out.
Thank you.
So that'll kick off your twenty day appeal period, will start on Thursday.
Perfect.
And after the twenty day, we have to.
Then he can just, no, he could just, he can have it recorded.
Has been beautifully done.
Yeah, so you're, you're all set with the registry now, they got the information on the elections, yup.
I haven't had anybody say anything, it's happy. We'll see, tomorrow. They didn't lose their paperwork.
Again, Britton, this only has to be signed by a majority of the board, so you don't have to worry about coming in to sign this if you don't want to.
Yeah, that's fine, I'll, I'll, I'll stop finally if you need me, but it's.
Yeah, no, as long as we have a majority, great, thank you.
Great, so you're all set with that?
Set with that.
Okay, uh, let's see, next. We have a public hearing on the petition of, uh.
This goes down, please. Down one more?
That email came in from another butter today.
Uh, applicant for House Country Market, uh, for operating retail business on two seventeen Berry Paxton Road. And this is a continuation from February eleventh, uh, twenty twenty-five. And I guess, I'm personally, any comments from planner?
Yeah, we still have yet to receive an updated, uh, site plan with the changes requested by the planning board.
Through Norm, I'll ask status.
So, with the snow and stuff, I haven't had a chance to sit down with Julian. Julian assures me that I'll have it by the next.
And it was my fault, I've been a little bit.
Yeah, certainly, by the next meeting, we'll have it.
Somehow that was gonna, I knew that was gonna be your answer.
It's all, it's all, with the snow, with the snow, I was out plowing on stuff. I haven't had time to sit down with them, what we're looking for.
Yeah.
We'll get her ready for the next meeting.
One thing on that, I would ask, we asked for measurements on the landscape area in front of it. The town and state have buried that in with snow, so measurements on that is.
You may not be able to give that exact, that's where the barrels are.
The landscaping, there's nothing being done, it's just mulch, there's nothing planting, anything like that. But the town and state.
Guys, 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 one, one at a time, please.
The town is just completely buried under fifteen feet, twenty feet of snow.
Didn't we say, though, we, we're, all we're worried about is from the fence back and the front?
Yeah.
So, you know, i- if mulch is in, in front of that fence, I'm good with that, I.
There's, yeah, it'll just be mulch, we're not planting anything permanent, there'll be no structures set up there.
I just want to make sure everything was on the fence and back, it's only I wanted to make sure of.
And we're just gonna highlight their use of that piece of property.
Correct, that's what we wanted, yeah.
Highlight that, everything's gonna be shifted out.
Color it, make it yellow, whatever you do.
So I understand what I gotta do.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll get it, I'll, I'll sit with Mark.
Like I said, I apologize, I've just been so busy plowing.
Did he get the email with the, with the few things that need to be added?
Like I said, I've just getting around and touching base with them today.
Okay.
Um, with all that snow, I've been out nonstop, plowing and solving.
I don't have a problem then, since they're in the process of extending this norm. Do you think you'll have it by our next meeting?
I will.
Okay.
So that, that has to be next Wednesday, then?
Okay.
Wednesday by the end of the day to get off of that agenda. Oh, actually, the week before, wouldn't, wouldn't, yeah, it would be next week, right?
Do you guys have a list of, of what you're looking for that I can take with?
I'll prop it off to you tomorrow.
I emailed it to him after the last meeting, yeah.
Just get it to me tomorrow.
The only thing I wanted to ask, Norm, is this email.
Yeah.
So I'm struggling, I don't, I thought we discussed all this, and the answer was no to this. Because, I guess, to the applicant and Julian, we got an email that says, I'll just, I'll read it, it's public anyhow. Hello, John, unfortunately, I'm unable, this is from Elizabeth Callahan, I don't have an address. Oh, I do, thirty Soucy Drive, Rutland, Mass, zero one five four three. It says, hello, John, unfortunately, I'm, I'm unable to attend the meeting this evening, but I have some strong concerns regarding How's Farm use of Berry Paxton Road property. Number one, the How's Farm owner said he, he would test the water with which they will be watering vegetable plants. Was a date given for getting the results of the test, and was it specified that it should include testing for chemicals known to be contaminating the soil? Also potential contamination from the cesspools and the dug wells. I got one more, and then I'll let you guys answer from that. Um, number two, it was stated that they're only, they, I'm sorry, it was stated that they only water the roots of the plants. Uh, hyphen, it is via the roots that the chemicals and contaminants will get into the rest of the plant. Note gasoline and oil are the contaminants at the property, and then there's an article that talks about plant absorption, and there's number three, the first directive all towns boards to serve protect the citizens of the town. If you are allowing the sale of contaminated vegetable plants, you're not protecting the public, children and pregnant women are buying and eating these plants. They are at the highest risk, you have the opportunity to protect the public right now. Number four, if the water testing proves hazardous, perhaps there can be a stipulation that either water is trucked in for watering, or there is restriction to sell landscape directly plants and flowers only. And the last one, number five, there is also concern regarding toilet facilities to ensure that the toilets are not being used, can this, can they be winterized to prevent use? Please present my concerns at the meeting this evening, thank you, Elizabeth Callahan.
Okay, so I can address.
So, hold on, can I address that last one?
Yup.
That last one seems to be out of the planning board purview, that's a, that's a.
I was just gonna say, I didn't even get a chance to say.
We don't, we don't get into toilets.
Yeah, that's a board of health issue that we're not.
As far as, as far as I understand as well, the watering of plants and stuff would fall under the board of health as well. The board of health will set those regulations for us. We've already discussed that the water would be tested, and if need be, we wouldn't carry vegetable plants, it's a very small portion of our business, but that's something that we would work with the board of health on. I'm pretty sure that they're the ones that would set that, those regulations.
Has the.
Um, we're gonna have.
Has that water been recently tested?
My understanding is yes, Ken Lebel has tested it. I cannot attest to it being tested, because I was not there. However, that would be as well, something that would be done prior to opening with the board of health. We need the board of health to sign off, which is gonna be inspecting our facilities for whatever we need before we can open. Water would be one of those things.
So, hold on, so what date would you be looking at to open?
All depends on when this is done.
The Nor, through Norm, and then with John, I, I, me personally, before I sign off on anything, I just want to make sure the board of health is on board with this, this letter. Because in the past, sometimes our boards have been ships in the night.
Yeah.
I don't want this to happen on this situation.
Okay, I can do that tomorrow.
So, it's the only thing I'm asking, is making sure.
So again, it's, we've already said, if, if it's an issue, we won't sell vegetable plants, end of.
I just want to take Elizabeth's concerns, she sent this to us, so we should act on it.
As far as bathrooms are concerned, there are none on site, so.
We, I gotta tell you, this is one time I, I defer to the board of health, I'm not getting in the middle, I'm not even gonna comment on it.
We definitely do not get involved in that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel like a lot of that's gonna be board of health issues.
Okay, so this is gonna be continued anyway?
Yes.
Just thinking of a condition to be put on this approval.
Well, typically, our, yeah, typically, our conditions are all permits are met, so. Our, you know, we've had conditions before with all the permitting is in line, state, local, any federal. I know that's mainly been on subdivisions, but.
See, the thing is, I'm not sure there are gonna be any building permits required before he opens up, and there may not be any C Os required before he opens up. So, what would the, what would the deadline be to get this information, that's, that's, to use Tim's term, that's what I'm struggling with.
Yeah.
Don't, we may not have a, we may not have a point of, a threshold of leverage to say, okay, before you get this granted, we need this.
We should get, I, I think we, Norm, we should consult with the board of health, I mean, because this is sort of out of our.
So that's why I recommend, let me check with the board of health, it's gonna be continued to the next meeting anyway. If there's a red flag that comes up, we can cross that.
Yeah, that's what I want to do, I, I don't, I don't want to make any decisions, me personally tonight. Let's just, I guess I'll make a, there's no other comments, make a motion to continue, but go ahead.
I got one comment, um, I wasn't here for the second meeting for How's Market, but I did Mullins Rule it and watched it on, on YouTube, I think it was February third.
Did you get the signature with Anita?
Yes, um, rather, the meeting was the twenty-eighth, I watched it on February third.
So you're still good?
Yeah.
I guess, Norm, I'll make a motion, uh, we got a, Britton's on there too, I don't wanna cut him off, and if there's any public to others.
No, you, you guys touched on my, my primary concern, which was the, the watering, but again, I'm sort of on the, on the side of, that's, that really is a board of health issue, let's consult them and get their feedback.
Okay, any other discussion?
Just publics, public.
Anyone from the public, anywhere? Not seeing anything, so a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue this hearing until our next meeting.
March eleventh.
March eleventh.
Six thirty P M.
Six thirty P M.
I will second said motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Keith?
Aye.
Aye.
Britton?
Aye.
Norm, aye.
Excellent, so you continued. Thank you. Could the control room, please, pull up the next set of plans for the Emerald and Welch plan, please?
Drop it off soon about.
This is not a continuation.
This is a new public hearing.
Yeah, because this is for estate lots.
Would you like me to read the, uh, public hearing notes, or would you like to do it?
Be my guest.
The Rutland Planning Board will hold a public hearing at the Rutland Public Library, two eighty Main Street, Rutland, Mass, on Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, at six thirty P M, on the petition of the C Mac Realty Trust for special permits pursuant to M G L Chapter forty-eight, Section nine, and the Rutland zoning bylaws, Article three, Section eight E, and Article seven, to allow the creation of five estate lots that will contain duplexes at the property identified as assessment map thirty-four, block B, lot four, located in the resident sixty zoning district. For more information on the application, please contact the planning office at five oh eight 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 six forty-one hundred, extension three zero zero one. Norman Anderson, Chairman, Rutland Planning Board, Worcester Telegram Gazette, February eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, and February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, so, uh, we have seen this plan before.
Yes, as part of the A and R submission.
Yeah.
So, would you like, does anyone want a larger plan to look at? Okay?
Okay.
Okay. Yes.
Julian, for true, for New England Environmental Design, well designed, in that realty. This property has gone through the A and R for configuration of requirements of shape of lot four, an estate lot, we are now getting the special permit to follow suit with the lot itself. So we've created these five lots, this one here, this one, this one, this one, and this one. We have the required frontage of more than fifty feet, going back the distance fifty feet wide, to where at that point, we need five acres of, five acres or more of land for each individual lot, which we have. These are all nine acre, eight acre, seven and a half acre, seven and a half acre, nine and a half acre, they all have adequate area.
Julian, just didn't, sorry to interrupt, you need seven and a half for duplexes.
Yes.
Seven and a half.
Yep, you said five, and I just want to make sure.
Sorry, seven and a half.
Which they all have.
Yep, they do, I just wanted to make sure that was in the record, that it was seven and a half required.
Seven and a half, they all have the required area for what we're proposing to do. This is a way to not go through a subdivision and divide it up that way. This is a way to not go through a subdivision and divide it up that way. So the landowner decided to go this route, and this is what we have.
If I can make a quick comment.
Yep.
The feedback I've gotten informally, verbally at my office, uh, from abutters and people from the area has been largely positive on this. They view this as an improvement from the previous submissions because it's gonna be less impactful on the area because it's less lots, and there's no roadways being constructed, so it's been, I, it's been largely supported also by other departments that I've spoken to. They prefer this design to the previous designs.
This is for five estate lots, correct?
Five estate lots, correct.
There's two on here that are on this drawing, but they're A N R lots.
They were A N Rs, yeah.
Two are coming off of Welch Ave.
Yes.
Excuse me, could you, sir, 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 sir.
Yep.
You need to introduce yourself for the record, please.
David Williams, twenty eight Welch Ave.
Thank you.
Surrounded by all of this.
Thank you.
Yeah, one of them is already A N R'd through Norm. Only one that welts, well, the only one that welts we're talking about tonight on this hearing is one.
Oh, yeah.
That's the only thing I wanted to make a point of is, there's only one on welts that we're discussing tonight.
That's the one that surrounds me. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, cause the other one was already approved previously, the one to the left of that, next to the police chief's lot.
Okay.
I, Julian, I went through this more times than not, and everything conforms to our estate lot, including the, the acreage that were required, which is one and a half times for duplexes. The only question that I didn't have answered, and maybe I missed it in the notes. These are all well and septic, or is?
Well and septic.
That's what I wanted.
We've already done the soil testing.
Okay. That was one of my only questions I had. Other than that, um, I, Norm, I, I can't say anything that jumps out from the estate lot bylaw.
I don't think this is particularly significant, but the only thing I'm looking at is if this is the actual plan that we're going to be signing.
Um, you've already signed the plan. You're signing the permits, the special permits. A N R is already recorded.
Yeah, you don't usually endorse these types of plans, I don't believe.
No.
It's referenced in the.
But what I'm thinking is that it's a proposed site plan. And those are proposed estate lots. Shouldn't there be something on file that doesn't say proposed? Once we grant the special permit, they are state lots.
Um, well, they're not until this moment.
So, so would, would you?
So we can give you. We can give you another plan that says site plan.
Yeah, there you.
I have no problem.
Yeah, for the signatures, we can get the site plan. I'm fine with that. But there's no plan gonna be recorded.
No, you, do you, you don't usually endorse these plans, do you?
No.
Okay, I was gonna say.
So we'll get it for your record that these are.
But they do get attached to the special permit, if I remember right, as a document.
It gets referred to.
Yeah, exactly.
So when you do that, Julian, just, just put the revision date on it.
We actually refer to the recorded plan. Cause that's already recorded and has the exact dimension.
No, no, but, but in our decision, the date on the plan is the date to refer to. The recording, that's after.
But it's gonna be, just so you know, it's gonna be a small, small plan, cause that's what gets recorded. They don't record this type of plan for this. It goes part of the, the rest of the documents, say in app by law. But it'll say site plan.
Can you, can you give me one large copy for the file list? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Cause it's more, it's easier to read.
You read it, yep.
And I guess this is through the chair. I'm gonna ask, um, I don't see your.
He could, he's in the airport, Mr.
I know that, I know that all too well.
Yes, you called me on the way here.
Is there, because of the condition of the road, um, we've done this with one other developer. Um, again, it was a, it was a private road. It wasn't an estate. Is there any potential for that, just the section where these, where the one estate lot is going in, and then the other four of him gravelling up, putting a, a bed of gravel in front of those roads to?
I'm gonna speak on his behalf and say probably not, because this is not what we're, if this is, this is a, using the frontage in front of the lot, not, before we're gonna propose a road, we're gonna redo a bunch of the road as part of the subdivision part. This is a whole different ballgame that, our boundaries, he needs to get driveway permits for each one of these individually going onto a public road. That's what he'll do, and whatever the D P W wants in that particular area, he'll do, for sure. That's part of the driveway permit. As far as doing any other work on Emerald Road or Welch, there is, there is no, there's nothing proposed or going to be proposed, cause it's a public road and the impact we're giving is presumed reasonable to the road in front of it. So, but there will be driveway permits. And that's gonna take up a good chunk of what you're talking about.
Yeah.
There's no stormwater management for this, right?
Um, actually, there's going to be.
Okay, cause I mean, that would be, I think, what everyone's probably worried that the road.
No, it's going to be, cause we're going to, the next step is going to be is filed, cause we have, we have these, these two lots within a hundred feet of this wetland, so they trigger it, and they trigger stormwater. So the next step, cause there's four more lots, so Mr. Harity had decided that he's not going to typically say, well, we're not part of that, cause we're not near it. We have, we're doing a design for, to attenuate the entire, just entire project stormwater wise. And that'll be taken care of at the Conservation Commission level. But as far as anything in the roadway, that's not part of any of this.
And you're gonna, obviously that entails just trying to protect water from getting onto the road, right?
Oh, yeah, there's nothing going onto the road.
Yeah.
Nothing's coming from the road, aren't they? Nope, that's all taken care of in that.
Like that should hopefully take care of people's concerns.
Yeah, that, you looked at those pictures, that's a big difference.
Well, well, it's not paved. It comes up for.
And we did have a discussion about this today, Tim. I talked to Norm about it as well. The current condition of the roadway is not the responsibility of the applicant. We're coming to the, it's, it's a, it's a dirt road. It's a public road. There was concern about the width of the road. There's nothing the applicant can do about that as far as the width of the road. And also, we're coming out of a winter where the snow's starting to melt. The ice is starting to melt. It's going to be muddy because it's a, it's a dirt road, so. Um, I, I will, I will, I will agree with the comments from the applicant on that one.
I guess I just have to kind of comment that those pictures could very well have been the road that I'm living on.
I know they are, because I've seen in that condition in the twenty five years I've lived here.
Yeah, gravel roads are tough this time of year.
I just had to throw Mike his.
Gravel may be generous.
On Brit- on Brittenell, um, on a private road, we've got the developer to, just in his area, to put down gravel in that area to improve the road.
Because he put a subdivision in.
Nope, it's not a subdivision.
Which one was that?
Or state lots.
State lots.
Which was that? Was that Hilltop?
Hilltop, Hilltop.
But it is a, it is a, it was a subdivision.
That's a totally different animal than this one.
He is creating a roadway, so it's a subdivision. It just happens to be a state lot.
Water through the middle of it.
The agreement was before it was a subdivision.
Correct, yeah, it was, the agreement was when it was a state lot, so I, it's a moot point. I'm just saying. It's, Julian, I'm just throwing it out there, cause I gotta ask. I can't, I can't tell you to do anything. I'm just asking.
Put the brakes on. If it was a subdivision and they was building a road, we were already planning on doing a bunch of stuff that, that the D P W wanted, but not, that's off the table.
All right. Nor am I. I'm done with.
John, uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Britton. Uh, real quick question. Um, each of these are condos, correct? They're, they're two family, um, two family.
Not necessarily a condo. They can, they're just a duplex, so whether.
Condominializes them or not, I don't.
If I could finish, that'd be great. Um, just real quick, so these are all shared driveways, correct?
Uh, shared for the duplex, which is a lot, so it's not an actual shared driveway. It's a driveway to this one building. So it doesn't fall under the
Common driveway.
Common driveway situation. It's.
Yeah, cause the, it's one driveway, and then it splits right before it gets to the.
House.
To the structure.
That's an interesting thought.
Okay, so you're not, you're not gonna have any H O A for the maintenance of that shared portion?
No, not unless he condominiumizes them and sells them separately, then he would do that. But right now, they're duplex.
So whoever owns that prop, so, uh, so you don't know if they're gonna be rented or owned at this point?
Exactly.
So, so I guess what he's asking is what, so if there happen to be two, if the duplex is sold individually to separate owners.
There'll definitely be a H O, because no one's gonna buy it without.
But we don't know that at this point.
Right, but that's.
I don't know too many people that buy two duplexes to live in.
Well, we have a lot in one socket, Rhode Island, yeah, and they're sold separately.
I mean, sold together.
We don't have that. I got one.
You have one with two people.
I own both of them.
Yeah.
We don't have anything like that.
No, and I'm just trying to think, you know, if it's on, if it's under one ownership, yes, I can see it not being a common driveway. But if they, if someone does sell.
Then they have to come and get it. I agree with you.
And it seems to, would become a common driveway.
Man, I sure would like to ask legal, how do you have one piece of property and two different owners on a house?
Cause it's a duplex. It's a duplex.
So, what if?
I mean, to me, that, to me, that's a common driveway because both units are using the same driveway. I, I'm not sure why we wouldn't require the same, uh.
Right now, it's.
One of the, as one of the hearings that we just had.
Owned by one person at this point. What, what dormant said, if they decide to condominiumize it, I think they have to come to you and have it, have the driveway done into a common driveway.
So we could put a condition of approval in that.
That's what I was getting at.
Yeah, so, so we can, we could think, I, we could think of the wording. Um, obviously, this is gonna have to be continued no matter what.
Yeah.
Uh, but we can, we can think of the wording. Well, because I don't have a decision ready to go tonight, so it has to be continued. Or, well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you could close the public hearing and have me work on a decision, so it could be closed, yes.
That's all.
I, yeah, I, I think it can, yeah. So, condition, you know, if.
You, you've never required that in any duplex in the town of Rutland before.
We've never, I don't think we've had a duplex on an estate lot before, have we?
Um.
I don't think so, at least in my tour duty.
With a split.
What does that matter, whether it's on an estate lot or on a regular lot?
Yeah, I don't think that makes any.
And there's a lot of duplexes in town, so.
Well, what we've done in the past doesn't mean that it's right now, so that's the reason why I like what Britton said.
We need to have a condition in there that if they, if they're sold to the general public, then they need to come before us with an H O A doc before that, before that house closes.
If the two units are not in common ownership.
I'm fine with that, and you, John, you could almost do the same thing that we did in the last one before the O C happens.
Well, but that's, it's not the occupancy permit, because if they get, if they get built occupied and resold, they're not gonna need it in an O C, an occupancy permit, cause they're already occupied. That's gonna be a legal mechanism, but they're not gonna have to come back to the building department for another occupancy permit once they're constructed and someone's living in them.
Uh, good point.
Okay.
Could I ask a quick question?
Yep.
You said that the meeting is about the house that's going in beside me.
Yes.
Uh, how much road frontage does it have?
Fifty feet.
Fifty feet's all it's required for an estate.
Yeah, and we have a provision. You, you talked about this, Tim, when it came forward. It requires a larger lot size, but the frontage stays the same.
Yeah, I, and I, shame on me. I thought, Norm, that it's been a while. I thought the duplexes were one and a half frontage, one and a half, and it's not. I was, I went and read the bylaw. It's, it's only one and a half property, physical area. The frontage is whatever the frontage is for that piece of property. So if it's an estate lot, it's fifty feet, but it requires one and a half times the property, and since the state lot's minimum five acres, it has to be seven point five acres then to put in a duplex. So, and then if it was in an R forty, it would be an acre and a half. R sixty, it would be two and two quarters acres that would be required to put in duplexes. If my math is right. Yeah. So fifty feet is all they need, but the house has to be set back. Um, where the house is, two hundred feet, so they can't put fifty feet and then drop a house. They gotta come back to where there's a minimum two hundred feet from side to side. So there's space on, how do I say it? There's, there's enough space on each side of the piece of the, um, building.
That's what these lines are.
Yep, and in this plan.
It's two hundred feet wide, so the house, this building has to be anywhere behind this line. Anywhere behind that line, anywhere behind that line, anywhere behind that line, anywhere behind that line.
Yep.
That's the requirement.
Yep, that's in our bylaw for a state lot.
Okay, anything else? Anything from the board? Anything from the public anywhere?
Do you still have to take the plan down for us to see if anybody can?
Yeah, could you please take the plan down, so we can see if anyone has a question?
Let's see, anybody with a hand up?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, yes.
Hi, so, yeah, Daryl McCall from Twenty Nine Emerald. So I, I actually sent the photos in, uh, to John yesterday of the road and, um, again, I've lived here since nineteen ninety nine, and yes, the road is typically like this. Uh, this time of year, just like Brittenell, just like many of the other places, uh, that have dirt roads, uh, in the town. You know, since nineteen ninety nine, nineteen ninety nine, there were only eight homes in this section of Rutland. So, or, or this section of Emerald, so, um, again, that's about a half a mile, and it's probably from Walnut on one side, down to Turkey Hill on the other side. And in the past year, um, we've had six new homes built, uh, on top of that. So, um, we have eleven new homes in twenty five years, six of those homes in the past year. The traffic that has, um, kinda gone up and down the road is, you know, again, much more so than of what has been going up and down the road for years. I guess my, my question is, um, you know, in terms of town planning, planning management and so forth, um, when we're looking at duplex and doubling up the number of, um, cars, basically, for each one of these lots, you know, you're looking, you know, the three houses that are built across the street that, um, Mr. Harity built last year, um, on, uh, this property, on the property across the street from me, each house has at least three cars, so I'm at four cars. Um, so what you're basically doing is, you, you're talking about a very small road, and you're adding, um, many more vehicles and traffic uh, to that road. I just, you know, I'm still kinda perplexed as to kinda the process that the town goes through in terms of, um, approving uh, these particular building lots, you know, is it, you know, are we better off having, um, just single family, single family homes being built versus duplex? Um, you know, these aren't, um, you know, I know we're well below the ten percent need for affordable housing. This isn't going to be affordable housing, um, as far as I know. So it, it, to me, it just doesn't make a lot of sense in terms of, you know, what we're doing as a community still. So I just kinda wanted to put that out there, and I appreciate the time you're putting into this, Planning Board. Um, very helpful, and ultimately, I just wanna make sure that, um, we take into consideration what we have to do. I, I literally have to, if I go out and a bus is coming up and down this section of Emerald, I have to pull into a driveway in order for the bus to go by, or a trash truck, which we now have more than one trash company, uh, that services our community. We have a couple. Um, those come down more than once a week now. It's a couple times a week. So all of that has come into play in terms of this tiny little road being way overused, and this is just going to kinda compound the issue as we kinda go through every single season, so I just wanted to share that thought. Thank you.
Can I comment on that? The way the laws are set up, where first of all, A N R lots, I mentioned Mr. Harity did several A N R lots previously. There's basically nothing the planning board can do to stop those. They have the proper frontage along a roadway. There basically is, legally, the planning board can't deny those. Um, the regulations are set up, like for instance, with the, um, with this estate lot plan. These are ten to twelve lots less than what could have been achieved under the previous iterations of this plan, so this is less intensive than what was produced before, especially with no roadways going in, where the pre, one of the, the conventional subdivision would have had roadways that would have connected the two roads, Emerald and Welch, together. So you would have had pass-through traffic that would have made these areas much more accessible from the other. In terms of planning, it's impossible to plan cars. You don't know what kind of family's gonna live in that house. You know, my wife and I, our kids are grown. It's just our two cars. You have a large home with parents, three kids. You could have five cars or more. You don't know if, if someone's gonna move in there who, who likes cars, and they're just gonna buy two or three antique cars that they keep in their driveway. So that is something that is impossible to plan for. So the regulations are set up where, um, in a lot of cases now, this is special permit, so it's a little bit different. But as long as this plan meets the regulations, the planning board really has no grounds to deny them. It's very difficult, so, um, these are things that are impossible to, to plan for, and in, in most cases, almost impossible to reject.
Through the chair, Daryl, the other thing I wanted to mention, the reason when I looked this over, I get it. I've been, I've seen that road. I've been on it. It's not desirable, but living off of. I get it, I've been, I've seen that road, I've been on it, it's not desirable, but living off of. Palm Augusta next to Sassoon and Brittenell, I know what you're going through, cause they're in the same condition. The reason I like this. Plan is because it's a total of fourteen potential properties. And the, the best case scenario we had was a common road coming in with twenty-two houses. So, we, we've knocked off eight houses and, um, a road coming in there. Uh, what I considered a dead-end road, basically, cause it was going to a cul-de-sac, so. Out of the three plans that I've seen, I, I, I gotta go with this one out of, out of the three choices, so. I get it, th- there's, there's gonna be fourteen, well, I, let me rephrase that. There's gonna be ten brand-new duplexes on Emerald and four on Welch. But out of the three plans, I guess through Norm, I, I gotta say, this is the best one that I've got in front of me, from a planner's perspective. And also, circumstances change over time, for instance, as I said, this is the third iteration on this property that's less intensive than the others. It's on, it's very difficult to look at a piece of property and say, well, how many lots do you think could be developed on this property? It depends on a lot of different factors. Is it a conventional subdivision? Is it an open space design? Are they duplexes? Are they single-family homes? What kind of wetlands are there? What kind of ledge is there that won't allow something to perk? So, these build-out analyses in this, in these areas of town are very, very tricky and very, very difficult. Again, there's properties that get bought and subdivided, and they create more lots, so it's, what, what's, you know. I understand the concern about frustration.
This is no further, it's right on the plan, no further subdivided.
Right, so.
Every lot.
So, sometimes, sometimes the planning, the, basically, the planning board is subject to what comes in front of it, and in terms of acting on it. And that, that's, that's something that's very difficult to plan for in these residential areas. That's why we have the minimum lot sizes we do, and the setbacks we do. And the, the frontage requirements.
And the, the, the other thing is that, you know, a- as. Building happens on, on roads, the roads take more abuse.
Yes.
And, you know, I hate to say this, but it's basically up to the town as best they can. To improve maintenance on those roads, to keep up with that increased use and increased traffic. Uh, and, you know, I'll just go with, and again, I, obviously, I can understand it where, from where I live, but. Well, I think we now have four, uh, disposal company, race disposal companies, serving Rutland.
With heavy trucks.
And I know all four of them come down my road. And let's face it, that, that causes wear and tear, uh, on those kinds of roads, and, uh, they're still, they're public roads.
There has been discussion, I've heard it since in my time here, where you start talking about potentially paving Brittenell Road, and the people living on it saying, no, no, no. We absolutely do not want this paved, so.
Well, they tried, they tried it a number of years, man.
Yeah, and there was some incorrect information floating around that you couldn't page historic road, which was incorrect.
Yeah.
You can pave it. Daryl, I was gonna give you some other advice, since I've been on that road, and I know it's lo- what it's like. I would suggest that you and your, um, constituents around there. Uh, bring this to the select board, because the DPW director reports to the town administrator on the select board. And try to get this moved up on a maintenance. I know, I, we all know what the budget situation is in Rutland, I get it. But, um, uh, Joe, um, oh gosh, I'm having a brain death with last, what's that? I know, but Joe had put together a list with StanTech of roads that, uh, Joe. Buckley, I'm sorry, Joe Buckley had come up with a list of roads with priorities that need maintenance. And it's not a bad idea to ask, ask the select board to revisit that, and see if Emerald and Welch, what their priority status is on those fixes. So.
No, I, I appreciate that, that's actually a very good idea, in terms of just that communication with the select board about the road, just in general. And, a- and again, y- you know, I've, I've lived this as school superintendent, where I've had, you know, the former town DPW person say, hey, we can't have buses. Go on that road anymore, sorry, because the road's so bad, and the town is saying that, you know, we, you know, as superintendent, I said, sorry, that's not gonna work. So, again, um, buses, uh, trash trucks, cars. I'm just looking at the entire picture, so I understand, this isn't, this isn't necessarily a planning board, um, issue, the planning board issue is approving, uh, you know, lots. Uh, so that's what it comes down to. The road issue is a select board issue, but I, I appreciate you listening, um. And, you know, just the fact that, I think, getting to the point, and it, the only other question I had was, so this is the third iteration of a plan, what happened to the second iteration?
Actually, it came, it came to a planning board meeting, it wasn't a public hearing, because it wasn't required to be a public hearing, I don't believe. Where the planning board was presented with two different concept plans, a conventional plan and an open space design plan. And that was discussed, and members of the neighborhood were here, and that was discussed, but then coming out of that meeting. This was an alternate design that the applicant brought forward, which is within their rights, they can, in fact, they could. And I hate, I hate to put this out there, but they could potentially get an approval for this plan, but then decide not to build it. And bring back an alternate design a year from now and say, hey, now we're looking at this, and town council has advised me that. They can have multiple approvals on the same lot for multiple projects, and then. Decide which one they wanna build, as long as the planning board has approved them.
Then, through Norm, Daryl, when I said there were two iterations, there was the two subdivisions that were being potentially presented to us as concept plans. One was the roads that, basically, it was a conventional subdivision that went all the way through, and I think there was twenty-seven.
Twenty, twenty-four, on the conventional, and twenty-two in the, in the open space.
And then the second plan was a, uh, basically, a, a one-road in with a cul-de-sac, maximum of a thousand. They went right at a thousand feet, and it was basically a dead-end road. And we weren't excited about either one, but we said the dead end was probably the better choice, cause it acts, it came off of Emerald and didn't go to Welch. You didn't have a throughway. And then the applicant decided to come up with option three, which is what's in front of us, but because it's a. An estate lot, it has to go through the special permit process, which means the planning board has to basically come up with the conditions and vote on it. A subdivision, all they gotta do is follow the rules and regs, and then we, basically, as long as they do, that can approve that. But this gives us a little bit more latitude, so, that's it, sorry, sorry if I went into more than I should, but I.
I, I appreciate that, and, uh, through the chair, thank you all, uh, very much for, um, your time serving on this committee as well.
Just gonna add, for Daryl's information, um, Chris Koloski actually recently updated that list, the pavement management list. So, I would recommend that Daryl reach out to the DPW, cause Chris probably has that information already.
Good.
Uh, yes, Elizabeth.
Hi, good evening. I just had a, a question, um, regarding some clarification about. The estate lot, um, regulations. Uh, it's my understanding that the measurement of acreage starts when the lot opens up to, um, two hundred feet in width. So, in my mind, that means that the rest of the lot needs to maintain that two hundred feet. But based on this, um, survey, is that incorrect? Do you understand my question?
The house is positioned.
I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to sift, sift through your question here a little bit.
So, the measurement of like the seven point five acres, that measurement starts when the. Um, width, like from the fifty feet at the roadside, when it reaches two hundred feet.
Yes.
It's my understanding that's when the measurement starts.
Yes.
So, in my mind, um, understanding this, the lot would be two hun- the rest of the lot would have at least two hundred feet in width. But based on these drawings, a lot of them become more narrow.
That's not.
And turn, et cetera, so it's. My understanding just isn't correct of what the regulation is.
No, that part, yeah.
There's, there's no requirement that, that the two hundred foot width be maintained.
Throughout the entire lot, no.
I see.
They just can't build a house until they get to the two hundred feet. It, beyond that two hundred feet is where the house can be set, inside or towards the road, as it shrinks down from two hundred to say fifty. There can't be any building of a structure inside of that, if you wanna call it funnel. It's gotta be on the other side of the funnel where the two hundred feet starts. That's sort of, if you wanna call it a frontage lot line for a house. In an estate lot.
Okay, okay, thank you. I, I do agree it's, that this is a better choice for this area, although it's still. Still gonna be a lot for the road and so on, but, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
My only short comment to Daryl is, is, and maybe you would know, and maybe you would know, cause you both live on dirt roads, is the town. Comes through and grades them, right? They come through and make adjustments as needed with dirt and grading.
And add gravel.
They do grade, and they do. Add, they do add gravel, but.
It's washed away, Norm.
Well, no, well, well, it's, uh, this, this is back from Joe Buckley. Uh, you know, he was saying that, you know, on a gravel road, when a gravel road is dry. You lose a half inch of that gravel to dust every year.
Well, from compression, from stuff driving over and compressing.
Just to dust, the blows off. You know, so, i- i- if you don't do anything, uh, you know, through a gravel road for five years. Now you've lost two and a half inches. And that, and that, that doesn't include what happens when it rains and stuff, some of the stuff gets washed off.
Okay.
So, i- it's, there's, it takes more to maintain the gravel roads than you might think, and then, and it's more expensive. Uh, and let's face it, a town doesn't have a whole great big bunch of money to do it.
Yeah.
So. I don't know, the only thing I, I've gotta say for my own self is, I've been living on the gravel road for forty years. There have literally been times, honestly, when we have had muddy ruts, like eight inches deep on Brittenell Drive.
Tank traps, baby.
Yeah, all I'm gonna say is, I chose to live on the gravel road. You know, and.
Okay, so I think, you know, are you gonna close the public hearing tonight, or are you gonna keep it open until the next meeting?
I think we should be able to close it.
I don't.
For the decision.
I'd like to close it, Norm, but I wouldn't wanna vote until I get the decision in front of me.
Right, oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
So, we did with the common driveway.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for the special permit of the state lots. On Emerald and Welch Road.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it. Just wait for Britten, see if he's gonna get it.
Is there any discussion, anything further from anybody?
Is that a hand, or?
Yep, okay, Elizabeth.
Yeah, we have, we have a motion to close the public hearing, so.
Sure.
What?
So, the only discussions in between us, and that's it?
The only discussions among the board.
Oh.
Sure, yeah, so.
Okay, uh. So, nothing from the board? Okay, and then the vote, Tim?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Britten?
Aye.
Norm, aye.
So, I'll work on the decision for the next meeting.
Okay, is her hand still up there?
Yeah.
I know, she's gone.
She left, she left, so.
Okay, okay. Okay, hope she didn't go away, man.
All right, so that's it for that.
Okay, I'll look for that.
So, I think, yeah, you're done, that's it.
Thank you, that went very well. And I'll see you guys in a couple weeks.
Unless you wanna talk about covert or covert stuff. Probably not.
All right, so, no. Okay, uh, special act to recall elected officials draft.
Um, Norm, I, I, before we get started on this, I, I need, Monday, I gotta go to the select board. I think this shouldn't even be worked on, because my experience with reading through charters, is this is gonna be in the charter. So, why are we doing two things at the same time, if, if this? I have no problem with the documentation and getting at the charter committee, but I struggle that I wanna have it, well, first I read Anita's. That was eye-opening, to say the least, but I, I don't see why we're rushing something through that's gonna be in a charter. That's why I wanted to talk to the select board about this, because if we send this to the state, say we get this all happy, it goes through town, it gets approved. And then it goes to the state, it's gonna be a year before it gets approved. Well, at the same time, we're putting a charter together with the same act inside the charter. That's, that to me is ridiculous, let, let the charter handle this, as opposed to rushing this thing through. What's twelve months, as opposed to the last forty without it? That's, I, I wanna put this before the board, so that's why I didn't wanna spend a lot of time other than if there's comments, cause Anita's comments were. God bless her, she had, I, I already gave comments to the select board on their acts as an individual citizen. Um, or as an elected official, whatever, but I think Anita's covers so much more. That I, I mean, I didn't have, I was gonna side with, yes, 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 Anita. But, I mean, I'm for it, I think it's, I think it's a good idea, but I don't think we should separate it from the charter that we're working on.
Kinda seems like it's a duplication.
Exactly, that's what I was getting at, Norm. I think we should be doing this, give it, and this is what I wanna talk to the select board about. Probably, I don't know, do I need to put that on as a, are they gonna talk about it on the third?
So, they're gonna talk about it. My only caution would be, if the board decides that they still wanna move forward. If you don't provide any comments back to them, they may just move forward without those comments.
Well, then I guess my comment, for me as an individual, so, uh, planning board member, is we should tell them that, um. I mean, I don't have any more comments than what Anita provided, cause I, me personally, I've already provided a ton of comments. To them on the first six sections, the last three I didn't, um, but the first, uh, six, I already gave them comments on it. And I was thinking about this, being on the charter committee, I'm going like, why are we duplicating the effort here? So, I wanted, I haven't had a chance to send an email to the select board, cause this just popped into my mind as I was reading Anita's comments, I'm going like, hold it. And I pulled out Sutton's charter, and right there it is, recall of elected officials, so they've got it in their charter, so I'm going like. Wouldn't we wanna, cause we gotta send the charter as a special act to the state, to get them to approve it, so why don't we just do it all in one fell swoop? So, I was gonna propose that to the select board, but I guess is, if the planning board wants to do that, we could send that as a comment. I don't know, because we're on the charter committee, I mean, you guys put me on the charter committee, so, that's the reason why I was bringing this to the planning board, I'm like, huh. I don't know, it just, it was a thought that came in the last forty-eight hours, and I was sitting down, I'm like, what the heck are we doing?
Kinda makes, kinda makes sense for me.
Cause I, I would figure, why waste, and I apologize for this terminology, waste legal money. When the charter's gonna basically do the same thing. I don't know, just a thought, let you guys go where you want, but that was.
Short comment would be, does, the charter goes to town meeting, right?
Yeah.
And so, as a complete document, it gets voted on.
Yep, yes.
Doing this ahead of time just gets it through town meeting, not twice, but it'd. I see what you mean. It's not like it needs to be enacted to get in the charter.
Correct.
Just what you're saying, yes.
That's what I was getting at, and I'm like, I, I, as I told the select board, when this, was trying to go into this, the fall town meeting, it's too quick. I think we need to take a look, and, and I know, when I'd given some comments, I talked to Harry about it, about getting some comments, and I got those into the select board, but. I really believe that we should let the charter committee handle this, and take all the work that's been done, don't get me wrong, with Anita's comments.
Yeah.
The select board's work, and give that to the charter committee and say, here you go, here's a template to work on. That's my thought, I don't know what, uh, I don't know what the board thinks, but that, that would be my big comment, and I'll shut up and let everybody else talk.
Britten, any comment?
I have none, I've read through Anita's draft, as well as the one on this packet, et cetera, pretty well covered, from, from me personally. No comment.
Any, any thoughts on what Tim is suggesting?
Um, yeah, I, I, I just kinda, if I was taking a guess, and I'm not presuming to know the minds of the select board, they're gonna go forward with it anyway. So, I think it would be worth to review, if anybody individually does have comments, to go ahead and provide those, but. I'm okay with also advising them, maybe, uh, or as our opinion, as a board, or however you wanna chop that up to. Basically, yeah, it, it's a double, we're doing two times the work, so maybe let the charter committee figure it out as well. But, um, I, I agree with that approach for sure. I don't know if we wanna. I don't know if we wanna officially make that, I don't, I don't know what, what level of response. They're looking for, or if it's just sort of notes, or if it's like, we, they want an official board position on the document, I'm not sure.
Norm, if I may, they're not seeking an official board position, they're just seeking feedback as a courtesy to other elected boards and officials.
Okay, got it, yeah, so then I think maybe we should at least give them the notes and, and. Also say, hey, this is, you're done with your workload for something that's already gonna be taken care of, but that's just one man's opinion.
Well, we have a member of the select board here.
We call it victim of choice.
Not, not to put you on the spot, but.
But to, but to put him on the spot.
But to put you on the spot.
What do you think?
Yeah, you think.
What would your question be?
What would the selectman's reaction be to not doing this separately, but waiting until it be done in formation of the charter?
I can't speak for the board, I can only speak for myself. And that the reason we chose this path, and we had started this a while ago, I believe even before the charter commission. So our goal was to. Solve an issue which was not solvable before. But if like Tim suggests. That it will be part of the charter. Then if we make, to me, common sense not to duplicate. And go to every board and ask their opinion on it, and then put it back in the charter and go to town hall, get legal on it and everything else. So it makes sense that we could wait for the charter. I don't believe we've had many issues in town over the last twenty years. Where this act to recall would have been critical. Real, like, we gotta get it done. So I know personally, and again, I can't speak for the board, that I think the, the time requirement is not an issue here. So, that would be my personal comment.
Norm, may I make a comment just as a resident, not in my official capacity? I think that with this topic, there comes a certain level of heaviness to it, because it, the implications are very strong. And my only concern with it being lumped in with the charter is that it may not get. The comprehensive discussion and review by the residents that it would if it was its own standalone discussion. And then my other question would be, is there a guarantee that the charter committee is going to seek the feedback of other elected? Boards and officials as part of their process on that?
I would, I would have to certainly think that they will.
If I might speak to that, again, not speaking for the board, but I would believe where this committee was appointed. By the select board, that the select board has a decision to suggest to them that they proceed in a very diligent. And, and in depth way for this piece into the charter.
Norm, through Harry and Tamika, the only reason this came up is I was doing my homework for the meeting that's coming up Thursday. And every charter I looked at had a elected recall section in it and a committee recall too. So it had the appointed and the elected in it, every one of them did. So I was just like, why are we gonna waste the time of sending this to the, the House and the Senate? When we're gonna do the same thing for the charter and it'll, and my fear is, what if the charter committee wants to do that and it's different than what's been sent? Then we're in a, uh, catch twenty-two. And that's why I thought, why don't we just lump this all together with the charter committee, and again, may, we have a select board representative on the charter committee. So, I mean. I don't, again, i- i- this is me just trying to minimize duplicate effort is what I was getting at, that's all I was trying to do.
Question through the chair? I haven't seen the copy that was submitted from the act. So, I'm assuming you have all the notes in, in terms of what was described. By the select board, so you can make a decision on some of the issues that were there. One of the paragraphs, or one that we take out, where there's a list of all the issues with which an individual could be recalled. We had discussed eliminating that, eliminating that entirely, letting it up to. A representative who, or somebody who wanted to do a recall, and for the reason they would give, and then the select board would look at it. So, if you have an opinion on that, that might be valid to send back. Then that could be, if we don't act on it, part to the charter committee, that they can see your viewpoint on that. So from that perspective, maybe your viewpoint would be important if we do indeed decide to go to charter.
So do, as a board, do we wanna make any comment to the select board?
I have one question. Does the charter committee last forever in the town? Or is this just to build a document?
No, just to until, kinda like the, uh, bylaw committee, the.
The master plan, same thing, it was. It's an eighteen, the, the expectation was eighteen to twenty-four months, if I remember right. Or less, depending on what, what happens, and then after that is completed, there's like a five-year review down the road after the charter's been accepted. But that's not the committee, it'll just be a, I'm guessing a review through the select order, yeah. So they have a specific task to do and to finish. And they would take on. Take it on the whole. Any new proposals as well as. Yeah. What's on the, what's on, what's in the bylaws, zoning bylaw, all that stuff already, or? No, the charter is basically, consider it like the overall constitution.
Yeah.
Of the town.
Yeah.
The bylaws still are in effect, the charter doesn't override the bylaws.
Charter is a ten thousand.
Yeah.
Overarching document on things, and it gets more specific with the general bylaws and the zoning bylaws.
Good example is Constitution Bill of Rights. That's, that's sort of how it is, the Constitution will be the charter, the Bill of Rights will be the bylaws.
Yeah.
And that's.
And the charter has to be accepted by the state.
Yes.
And any changes to that charter, again, would have to go to a state approval.
Yeah, well, first it goes through the town if they want any changes, and then that has to get sent to the state, they review it and then approve and send it back. That's the difference between charters and bylaws, bylaws will handle it at a local level, charters handle that at a state level. So that's, that's the difficulty of, once you get a charter in place, if you wanna change it, it's a state change, uh, the town. Uh, votes on the change, but then it has to go to the state to be approved, any changes, so.
Harry?
Through the chair? With, the board felt in doing its due diligence, because it is a. On, on elected officials, that the board should send it to all the boards, whoever, who are elected. To get their opinion on this, we didn't wanna have to do this, so we sent this really out to you. So that we can get your opinion on this and get the feedback from all the boards out there. So, you just happen to get it now.
Yeah.
I'll just go back to my question here, is there anything that we as a board want to forward to the select board?
I just, I, I mean, I've been through this and I, like, Harry knows, I sent comments in all the way up to section six, and after that. It was to me legalese that I didn't really feel that I need to be involved, and it was, it was up to, the first six were the important ones. And, and Anita's come up with some, some thoughts that I hadn't even thought of. So, I mean, I don't know what the board thinks, but man, I'd like to support her thoughts. From the, from a, from an elected board, because, I mean, some of them she's got, it's because of. Her, um, requirement as a town clerk.
Yeah.
But, um. I, 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 I really struggled with her first or second sentence, I do have serious reservations. Regarding a recall provision on comments over the years from other towns. That, that led me to a huge pause, I'm like, really? Oh boy, cuz she being the clerk is tied in throughout the Commonwealth, so I'm like, uh. Okay. And, and again, I, I, I'm, I'm okay with a recall, just because, you know, I think it. It's not a bad idea to have something in place, it's just, to me, it's always a slippery slope.
Oh yeah.
But I think some of Anita's suggestions of like, instead of fifty, two hundred.
If I may, that set of questions that I sent out with that documented the proposed changes that the select board made. And that was one of the changes, that they increased that number.
Okay.
From fifty to two hundred, cuz that's the number used to.
So all of these markups are all the changes that they suggest?
So all of those markups are Anita's, but when I sent out the original. Changes that the, the select board had proposed to make, just so that when you provided your feedback, it wasn't redundant to what the board had already considered.
Son of a bitch.
Yeah, so that number had already changed to two hundred.
Okay. I apologize. You know, my only short comments were the technical side of it, and it, I wouldn't really wanna be involved with. Changing too much any language in here really, but, you know, it seems like someone thought about if it's within six months of you. Coming up for reelection, well, I guess the reelection would be your recall, if people knew there's a reason for you not to be. An elected official anymore, they wouldn't vote for you. It doesn't really say you can't file paperwork. No, that's the cool-off period, and that's, Norm, if, if one comment I can make, at least my opinion to what Keith's saying. Is I'm more for the one-year cool-off than two years, two years seems like an awful long time. I, I'm really more of a one-year person. Give one year to get things cooled off, two seems like a little bit. Excessive, that's my opinion. Oh, you mean if you're on the verge of being recalled? No, if you get recalled, there's, um, um, a cooling off period where you can't run for any office or anything for. Uh, two-year period, if I'm not mistaken? No, it's, some members would prefer two years of cooling off, others would like one year, that's section nine. If you've been removed from office.
Yeah.
And, um, it's, I guess what they call, you can't be appointed to a town office. I thought you couldn't be elected either, you couldn't run for office, but I don't see that wording in here.
That's true, you can run for office anytime you want.
Okay.
But you cannot be elected, uh, to any committee or other in town, which is not an elected board.
Alright, so you, you can't be appointed to anything, you can run for office, but you can't be appointed. And that's where I was going from two years to one year, just. If you wanna run and you think you can get elected, great, but, uh, I think from, uh, being put on a committee. Because of a potential issue, I think it should be a one-year cooling off, not a two, that's, that's the only thing I think the board thinks to me, I'm sorry, I did not. I didn't see this, I printed out the, um, this, but I didn't print this out.
So.
So could I just kindly ask that whatever comments you guys have, John co-leads them into a memo that I can then provide to the select board for their discussion on Monday?
Well, I'm, I'm taking a vacation day on Thursday, so tomorrow's gonna be my last day before Monday, so.
Well, you guys would decide tonight though, right, your comments?
We have to, because it's gotta be in by.
By Friday.
Friday.
Harry?
One last comment, I promise. The board thought really hard about this, I looked at numerous other towns' acts. To recall an elected official. I'd say ninety percent of them were ten times stricter than this.
Yeah.
So we tried to really think hard about what it would take to have somebody recalled. And the number of individuals, so it wouldn't become a partisan issue. You have to go out there and really get the numbers to do that, and that's why we increased a lot of those numbers. So, just bear that in mind, that we didn't take the, we did some work on this, so. But again, your comments are welcome, I think the board would appreciate them. Uh, again, you bring up a, an interesting observation. Uh, Tim, about if we're gonna do this, we started it before the charter commission was in effect, so maybe. Yeah, we did start it then, but maybe the obvious route is to go to the charter. Just making sure that they do their job in getting that done right, is that part of it?
Well, or, and, 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 I'm not getting, I, I'm getting the sense that the board may not be ready right now. To have a collated set of comments for the board, so my recommendation would be.
Move forward without the comments or not?
That, oh, I, I, I know, I know, but what I'm saying is, if you have comments, why can't they just come from Tim on behalf of the board? They don't necessarily have to be collated by me.
I can send an email to.
Yeah.
As long as, Norm, you're okay with that, I'll send an email, come write it tonight, and send it to Tamika.
If I just have something in writing that I can put in their packets for them to review, that would be helpful.
Yeah. I mean, again, the, the, the biggest thing I've got, I don't know about the board, is I didn't like this, this two years, I like to go into one year. Have a cooling off period, I think two is a little excessive, and, and Harry's right, there were some that I read that had three to five years in them. I mean, come on, in five years I could be in, in California, well, that's crazy, make it, uh, Georgia. Yeah, not going to California, New York.
Yeah, so that'd be my suggestion, so you guys aren't rushed, and, um.
It doesn't say any town, so you're saying. Anywhere in the country, anywhere in the state? No, 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 it's, it's. Statewide? No, no, it's just, it's just, it's, it applies to Rutland only. Okay, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Cuz this act would, special act would be just associated with Rutland, there would be, I could run for state senator. Or federal senator against Elizabeth, if I wanted to. Keep going, yeah. Or Markey. Um, that was my only comment, is in section nine, that I wanted to pass on to the board is that, um. Oh, they don't, in this one. Again, maybe this is the one Anita has, it doesn't have a date on it, it doesn't have a timeframe in section nine. Says any person who's been removed from office under the act, or who has resigned from office shall. I'm sorry, following the issuance of recall petition under section four, and before certification of results of special recall. Shall not be appointed to any town office commission, committee with, oh, there it is, two years, sorry, I'm looking for numbers, not words, so. I would suggest that the board recommend to the select board make that one year. So. I- i- if somebody wanted to join the, uh, bylaw subcommittee, I wouldn't wanna have to lose a person because they're on a two-year hold. I want them to cool down for a year if that, if it was really a hot topic, but I don't think more than a, uh, a year. That's my opinion, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks. Obviously, you can get recalled and then essentially. Would you be able to run again for that same position, or are you saying? Like Harry said, elected, you can, I could, next year, try to get re-elected to the same position, and they can't do anything about it. It's the appointed positions that the select board appoints.
Yeah.
Um, you can't be appointed to. But if you can be recalled, then you'll still run, what does the recall really do?
Well, we had this happen in my home city of One Socket, where the former mayor, Lisa Baldelli. Was basically removed by the city council, and then two months later ran unopposed and won the office back. But then there was a scandal, and six months into that new term, she resigned for health reasons, so.
Before some guys from Washington showed up, called the FBI and moved her. Yeah, I just, I guess I'm not, you can get recalled. For whatever unknown reason. But you can still run again.
But I don't think there's anything the town can do to stop somebody from running, that's the thing, the town does not control that.
You'd have to have people behind you. The only thing, only reason you couldn't be an elected, if you can't run for an elected, is what we found out when we were on the board. Um, you, you decide not to run, which you would be, why would you if you're gonna try to get elected? Or the second thing is, you've been convicted of a felony.
Right.
And that's, that's game, set, match, you can't do anything. Yeah, you can't be. So, that was my only comment, um, I like what the rest of the select board did with these comments, I do. And Anita's got a lot of good ones, I don't think we need to duplicate hers, so.
So yeah, if you could do that, Tim, if you could put together an email in the next couple of days and get that to Tamika from, from Monday night.
I mean, is there anything else anybody has, cuz I. I guess my, that, just to clarify question, I, the, the, the two-year period is the time between. Someone signing a petition in a. And maybe it being certified as a signed petition into the phase of a, a special recall action.
and maybe it being certified as a signed petition into the phase of a a special recall election being administered.
No, it's.
What I'm reading, like.
No, it says any person who has been removed or has resigned from the office following the issuance of a recall, so.
So once you're recalled, there's a period of time you can't be appointed to any other board in town. That's all that's.
Basically, and I say I think it should be a year. I mean, cuz the recall, I think, if I'm not mistaken, to me, it's a couple of months is the process.
Yeah, it's a lengthy process and Keith, so it doesn't start from the time that you pull the papers or even the election because there's no guarantee that that person would be, would lose the the election and be recalled. So it's only if they're recalled and then the clock starts from that date and then whether it's one year or two years, whatever they settle on.
Cuz somebody could pull papers trying to recall you and then it gets shot down or there's not enough, there's not two hundred signatures and it goes away.
Yeah.
So that's why, again, I just.
Okay, so basically you're gonna handle that.
Yeah, i- if it's just one, if it's just one item, I just wanna make sure the board board's okay with just I'm basically just gonna say one item changed from two years to one.
Oh, so that's it?
That's it. I don't think there's anything else. Cuz Tamika, this all went, all of her comments, all um, Anita's comments went to the board, right? So I don't think we need to repeat those, do we?
Right, and um, the only other board I heard back from was the Board of Health and they had a comment.
Okay.
I've not heard back from any other elected officials.
Alright, so I I think this is a real easy.
Yeah, so so there's your comment. Two years to one year.
Yep, I'll I'll send it, I'll send it to you and then I'll copy Norman, John.
That's fine.
On it, okay, good enough. That's done.
Next item is, is Town Planner Report.
Yeah, so just to talk about the, talk about the agenda coming up on March eleventh, um, in addition to the continued items we have. We're already into March, so I'm gonna be presenting three zoning bylaw amendments that are gonna need to have a public hearing in April. The accessory dwelling unit bylaws being reviewed by town council that I drafted up to meet the state requirements and um, so I hope to have an answer from them within the next week as far as what needs to be changed. Um, been talking to Tom Cor- Tom Corbett about the um, about the bylaw for energy storage. Right now, I'm just formatting that into fit our bylaws, so that'll be a draft will be presented. Um, it'll be a joint meeting of the select, of the planning board and the bylaw subcommittee on the eleventh. So that will be presented as a draft bylaw and also the floodplain. I basically just finished up with that and got final comments back from DCR today. So the language is finalized that needs to go into our zoning bylaws for that.
And Norm, what I said to John about the battery energy bylaw is I don't mind taking the technical questions, but I like to have Tom there. If something gets over my head or I don't know, I know when I I call Uncle and I would turn to him as a technical support. Wouldn't have him do the presentation, have the board answer the questions, but have that him there as the technical support.
Yeah.
For the public hearings, yeah.
And town meeting?
And town meeting too.
Yeah.
Cuz you never know what's gonna come up and if somebody.
That's a tough one, yeah.
It it will, I mean, getting into the detail of how it's gonna be handled, that nobody can, I mean, I I would have it I wouldn't even try to answer that because you gotta build it before you.
So that's all I have for my report, okay?
The only other thing, Norm, is that correspondence is before that. I am livid when I went through this and saw this design date of four, four April of twenty twenty four, and this was never presented to the board. I had to calm down and set this aside when I read these, when they read these prints. Cuz the fact that you knew you were gonna do this and you didn't put it before the board or give it, get it to John, I was
Yeah.
Very PO to say the the least. Um, and so I have a hard time supporting anybody that can't come to the board with this, I mean, they're stamped, they're they're PE stamped. And it's, it's, it's as of four, five, twenty twenty four, so it's almost a year ago.
Yeah.
You could have alleviated a lot of these problems and know what was going on.
Yeah.
And that's my frustration. I don't even know, I, this letter from Lucas I read through and I'm like, okay, fine. I I don't, it Kevin Quinn didn't even, from what I gather, again, I wanna put words in Kevin's mouth, I don't think he knew about these drawings.
I would say, yeah, you're probably right.
And it's just anyhow, I just wanted to put in front of the board, I'm frustrated. I don't, I, I was gonna I was, if Britten was here, I was gonna poke him, get him wound up too.
You don't need to. I actually had the exact same comments. I mean, I don't wanna kick a dead horse on it, but that's a little bit um it's frustrating for me to see that. Um, it's, um, it 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 leaves a bad, bad taste in my mouth um, in regards to entities that that sort of perform in that method where they make changes um knowingly cha- knowingly knowingly going to make what I would consider a substantial change to a design and then um, just doing it and then, oh, shoot, somebody saw it, uh, now we gotta go out and we gotta do it. Uh, do it the right way. I I don't like that method of doing business, but um, I guess to each their own, but I'm not, I'm not super, um, I'm not super pumped about it, I'll tell you that much.
Yeah, that was, yeah, I'm in the same boat, Norm, so I just wanna put it out on the public record that I'm really frustrated.
So.
Anyhow, that's it.
Um, I guess my only comment is I know he just finished two crossings in, is it Grizzly? Way down at the bottom.
Oh, Brittenella Estates.
Brittenella Estates and I, my guess is he took that platform and just said, we'll do the the next crossing, which and somehow didn't line up with with the product he proposed a long time ago, but it's, you know. Um, cuz I think he did corrugated, whatever it's, metal metal sheet. So I'm guessing that's where it came from and maybe that's the timeline that he's, I don't know. Maybe, I'm just guessing at that, but.
I'm just, again.
But you're right about timing and and preparedness, it's not there.
If 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 ever Source tried it, the DPU would have us hung out to dry for doing something like this. So I just, I I'm not happy, so that's it. Don't need to, like Britten said, I don't need to kick the dead horse, but I guess we maybe need to tell Cle that this has gotta stop. I mean, here we go with round six of, anyhow, enough said.
Okay. Uh. With any other discussion I have, I guess I'm just gonna say it on the quest of you. Uh. Brindle Drive and Hilltop Estates where they're putting in the sewer and water. Now, I'm assuming you remember that the Hilltop Estates is right, sat right at the crest of the hill.
Oh, yeah.
They have been doing excavating down on the far side of the hill. Down to like my neighbors.
But there's no properties down there.
Well, yeah, there is.
Well, I mean, there's no properties part of the Hilltop Estate that far, is there?
Yeah, that's where some of the frontage for the estate lots is.
Oh, but we weren't going to do.
But I was not under the impression that he was going to be running the sewer and water any further than the top of the hill.
Correct.
And my request, I guess, John, to you is.
You have to get together with DPW on that and look at that.
DPW and see if you can get a copy of the plans showing what that sewer extension actually is, sewer and water extension is.
Yeah, cuz.
He's he's a good two hundred feet, maybe three hundred feet.
Past the old, the bypass to, I I can't remember the lady's name.
Past the top of the hill at Hilltop.
Oh.
Coming towards, going towards.
Towards your house.
Yeah, which is.
Basically towards Palmiguss.
Yeah.
At the end of that hill, it takes a left. You went to the bottom of that hill.
Yeah, so.
I'm confused.
I'll get a copy of those plans and.
Is it covered or is it open?
Well, it d- doesn't matter cuz initially.
I know, but.
I, the plan that we have for the subdivision just comes up that o- o- off the pump station goes underneath the road and then up, up to Hilltop. It doesn't go that way, so.
And and I couldn't be sure, but it I drove up there, but it's one of his, it's a mud mud hole where he's been doing the excavating.
Yeah.
Total mud hole, but I do think that he had, it was a steel plate or it's got a big piece of plywood.
Over the top of the.
Over the top of one spot and that's right across literally from my ne- my next door neighbor. Uh, and that's that two hundred feet, three hundred feet down from the top of the hill.
But to John's point, we don't have control over it. That's all Chris, right?
No, I just, I just like to see it.
It's interesting.
No, no, I meant from the standpoint of anything that's going wrong, we, that's all Chris is.
Well, no, we have to compare, uh, compare what plans he has to the extent of what was approved.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, and I I guess my my thoughts are kinda going towards, okay, this sewer extension up to Hilltop yeah, eventually will be taken over by the town. But wait a minute, going down past Hilltop, that and I, again, I'm I'm making some wild assumptions here. It is possible that, for example, my neighbor okay, where could hook to, hook up to that sewer and it could be another private sewer line warehouse all the way up to the Hilltop.
Oh, with an E one pump in their bu- in their basement or wherever it is.
Yeah.
Yech. Glad I'm not living over there.
I will check on that.
Wow.
Maybe he'll give us revised plans.
Yeah. After, he's already done it.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. So to 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 jump off that just for a second, then I'll shut up and we get out of here. After this work's been done, was there any thought process of of him cleaning that road up or is that?
Uh, I'll be keeping an eye on that.
Yeah, okay, alright.
That that agreement for some gravel, we'll go back and take a look at it.
Yeah.
It came with those estate lots. We we haven't called him on that.
Yeah, cuz Joe was, he was pretty adamant about what happened. Now Chris has gotta take over, so Chris will be.
And if, if the state of the road where they've been doing the excavating is any sign of what it's going to be when they're done, no.
Just to add to that real quick, um, excuse me. Uh, my son's bus stop got moved up into the the development there and I have to drive the tractor from my house up into the development and the entryway into the development is horrible, all just three inches, four inches, six inches size. And the town came and cleared that even though it's private property owned by Blair, the town came and cleared that out.
Ouch.
Cuz Blair, I don't know if he wouldn't do it, but I I'm not sure why the town's, I mean, the town's already helping him make money by letting all those giant semis come up and down the road and just put huge ruts that everyone has to then pay for with their car maintenance and everything else. And now we're clearing out the end of the road too? Like, where do we stop?
Yeah, Chris is getting involved with that.
Yeah.
Chris is, yeah.
And they probably shouldn't put salt on a dirt road.
Well. I I I sort of agree, uh, you know, that.
Melts the roads, gets into the wetlands.
But I'll tell you, I I have seen uh, sometimes on Brittenell Drive.
All those slopes.
Where they haven't spreaded the salt.
That's true, true. I walk almost to your house every morning.
And, well, let's put it this way, we had a school bus go off the road right in front of my property down here because it was just solid ice.
Yeah.
And no shade.
And and I mean, no sun, no sun gets through there.
No sun, right.
Yeah, the UPS driver, he has his good safety uh thirty-three year thing cuz of my winch, cuz he's went off on that road over there and called me, Tim, get over here with the winch, I need to get my truck out. I go call UPS, no! So uh, that that road will turn into, it's almost like a waterfall of ice on the downside of that slope. Past um, Bryce Lemon where it dropped, or where Brittenell is, not Brittenell, where Hilltop is, that turns into an ice skating rink I've seen, anyhow.
Norm, I I just wanted to add, um, our office is also receiving several complaints about those concerns that were raised on Brittenell Drive as well as the condition of, um the the plowing and treatment of the roads that are still, um, private roads and not public roads.
You're getting also flashes on time too, two weeks into five.
Correct.
I've been reading that too.
Yeah.
Did we, if.
Wait, which, among among other things, we can't get our trash picked up.
Yeah, or you, FedEx won't go down there. Anyhow, I just wanna say, cuz I've been asked, just to let John, you know, is, and Tamika, I've been getting questions on why isn't the board, why is the board letting this happen? I go, whoa, hold on.
It's nothing to do with us.
That's what I said, I said, Chris Kaloski, you gotta go talk to Chris. I don't have any control over this from the board, nor does the, any of the board members. Or John. Anyhow.
I thought even we mentioned that we were gonna restrict what time of year he could be up there with that type of equipment. I I swear we said.
Building the subdivision, you're right, but.
Yeah.
But what he's doing now is on DPW, it's not us.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, going forward, I think he's, we said only.
Not on Hilltop.
No, there's another one.
Not on Hilltop.
Yeah, we said Hilltop, there's only a certain timeframe.
Good, so.
Yep.
Anyway.
I'll put a motion to.
Adjourn.
Adjourn the planning board.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thanks. Eric.
Thanks, guys.
I grab a.
Thanks, Britten.
A signature from you.
I agree, that's why.